I'd like to bring the City Commission, or the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order regular meeting Thursday, June 1st, 7:00 PM. We stand for a prayer from Reverend Lepley, please.
Since this is Memorial Day week and Pentecost week, and the Walpo Island Singers are going to sing over on Harson's Island this week, I brought you a prayer from the Navajo chief. Let us pray. There is a time to put away weapons of violence, whether they be made of metal or of words. We need to come together as a community, to be scholars, engineers, scientists, builders, farmers, gardeners, leaders, workers, and healers. If we are to survive the pressure of all the issues that living together brings, we must be a community. A community puts aside small benefits for individuals and enables each citizen to give with gratitude toward the larger good of all its members. Only a community can accomplish great things. One solitary person grasping what is in their own hand and in their own mind with ferocity will accomplish nothing but paralysis. Dr. Fred Bigay, Navajo chief. Amen.
And, uh, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the very kingdom of this world.
Roll call, please.
Here, Vanabash.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Present.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Present.
City manager Lepley.
Here.
Communications, can I get a motion to accept and file communications?
Make a motion to accept and file communications, including pending agenda items and Tifa board position statement.
Mr. Avery.
I can have a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns on it? Mrs. Lepley.
Um, I think that we should read the position statement, uh, from the, from our Tifa board. The following is intended as a statement of the position of the current Tifa board members regarding the proposal to dissolve Tifa in the city of Marine City on December 15th, 2018. It is the consensus of the board that application be made to the appropriate parties for another extension through December 15th, 2023, as Tifa's work is not yet finished. Further, it is our strong feeling that dissolution of Tifa in 2018 would be extremely detrimental to the fiscal condition of the city and would bring to an abrupt halt the investment in residential and business development that Tifa projects have inspired, particularly since 2005. And it's signed by Chairperson Craig May, Board Vice Chair Scott Tisdale, Board Members Bob Weisenbaugh, Bob Lepley, Frederick Babcheck, Chuck Signori, and Rebecca Bryson. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Just a question. So, in front of us tonight, there's something printed out here, Tifa districts are now supposed to last forever. Is this, is this intended for communication?
No.
What's the intent?
It's just a reference that I gave you because I, it was in the newspaper.
Well, this is from you.
Yes, it was. So, everybody had the same thing as everybody else.
Okay.
It's just a reference.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor to receive and file?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Uh, public comment. Residents are welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Erin Deitch, 323 North William. Um, I just wanted to come up, uh, we have a few fundraisers going on here. Uh, one is, uh, the River Rockteen Zone. We have, the Mariner has a premiere, world premiere going on June 16th. Uh, all proceeds are going to the River Rockteen Zone. We're super excited to be moving forward, so we hope-
The world premiere?
The world premiere. It's called Night School. It is being shown only New York, Indianapolis, Los Angeles, and Marine City. So-
Not fun.
So, yeah. So, we're super excited. June 16th, and then we're gonna be, there's a few other showings. Uh, second fundraiser we're working on is with, uh, New Dawn. We're sponsoring, uh, chemocare totes again. We did this back in February. We were able to donate 55 totes to the cancer center in Port Huron. Those totes have all been given out already to the patients, so their cupboards are empty. So, we're restocking. We're up to about 60 totes right now again. Uh, we're hoping to hit 100 before we take them up. So, if anybody's interested in donating to help, totes are $20 to sponsor. Uh, their money can be dropped off with Jackie at the Corner Grocery, or it can be dropped off at the Mariner, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoons. That's it.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Coes.
Yuri Coes, 430 Water Street, the Mariner. I just thought I'd use this massive audience on Channel 6 to plug a few things that are coming up with, um, the Mariner and Marine City. Um, we're sponsoring, of course, Comic-Con on Saturday, and, Mr. Mayor, you can come as yourself, so, and you'll be ahead. And the point is, last year was insanity at its finest, and this year promises to be even greater. So, it's, uh, it's gonna be a great event. On Sunday, we're sponsoring the Slow Ride to Canada, and, um, we know it's a success because we got Canadian Customs all mad at us. So, this is good. So, we're doing something right. So, but we're still going to Canada whether they like it or not, so. But, uh, we think in spite of the rain, um, it's, it's gonna be a big success, and we're gonna try and sponsor a slow ride in Marine City once a month now. And, uh, they'll meet at Drake Park, and we've got some really great bicycles coming, just really off-the-wall stuff, so that's good stuff. As Erin said, we have a world, another world premiere. Last year, we had The Great Alone, and we outsold every theater in America. And then the distributors out of New York have found us here in Marine City, which is really wild, and they said, "How'd you do that?" And I said, "Well, give us one of your films and we'll show you." And so, they did. Night School. We just previewed it about an hour and a half ago for President of the School Board, School Board members, and teachers. And let me just tell you, it's, it's a pretty powerful movie. An incredibly powerful movie. We had students there, selected students, and, uh, there, everyone just was mesmerized by it. So, it's a tremendous documentary, and Netflix owns it. It was only shown at the Trebekka Film Festival, and Netflix won't release it until probably late July, but the theatrical premiere will be in New York, Indianapolis, Los Angeles, and Marine City, and we'll outsell all three of those places. We know we will, so. And it's for the benefit of the River Rockteen Zone. Then, off of that, another distributor called us out of New York and offered us another premiere called Written Off, and it's a extremely powerful movie about opio- opioid use. We showed the trailer today. And, um, it's about a drug addict, and the remainder of his life, if you will, is told through his diary, and the documentary explains what he is going through from his mother, girlfriend, and friends' point of view. They didn't know what he was writing in his diary. He hid it from them. So, that, this, it's, it's so timely that for this, especially this region. So, then, my attitude was, well, this is bigger than Marine City. How could that possibly be, right? But it is much bigger. It's a regional thing. So, I said, "Well, let's just dial this up. We'll sell, we'll sell the most number of tickets. We know that." But, the point is, this belongs in Detroit. This belongs in, in, in Port Huron. Aside from our River Rockteen Zone, aside from Marine City, aside from the Mariner, it belongs in the big cities. So, we reached out to Detroit, and the DIA has agreed to allow the Mariner to present the film on the June 29th in their thousand-seat theater in the DIA in Detroit, which is really phenomenal. Um, Written Off, it, we're in negotiations with the DSO in Detroit to use their theater and using this for a fundraiser for, for, um, the Detroit Children's Choir. Uh, and then, we're talking with McMoran Center about showing most films, and we have a corporate sponsor to do it, and we're in talks with the Times Herald now to be the, the carrier and the sponsor for this with the corporate sponsor and the Mariner. And here again, it'll be the Mariner from Marine City presenting these films in major metropolitan markets, which is gonna say something for Marine City. So, that's really exciting. Um, but the most exciting thing of all, and the thing that, the reason I'm here tonight, is all that's fun and all that's great, and we're moving forward on the, on, on the River Rockteen Zone, and, and that's been a year of insanity its own right, but we're getting there, and it's, it's gonna work. But, what, why I'm here tonight is, on June 24th at 2:00 in Drake Park, we are sponsoring the DSO's Children's, uh, Detroit Children's Choir. Thirty kids from the inner city to come out here and do a performance in Drake Park at 2:00 in the afternoon. Many of these kids have never been out of the city limits of Detroit, and yet, this choir is phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. So, we're sponsoring them to Marine City. We're gonna feed them at, at Anita's, and we said, "Open menu, whatever you want." And after the concert at 2:00, and when we did the Navy concert, we filled it with, what, 600 people? I want 600 people here at that park for those kids at 2:00 on that Saturday, June 24th. And after the concert's done, they're going to invite everybody in the park to follow them down Water Street, and they're gonna do three sets, one at, at the Sweet Tooth, one at the Pavilion at the Beach, and one at the Bandstand in the Old City Hall. So, I hope everyone will be there. So, thank you.
Good question.
I saw a tour bus in town today. Do you know anything about that?
Well, we've got booked probably for this summer more than 30 tour buses. They came from Flint.
Oh.
And we will have about 30 tours right now coming to the Mariner.
Oh, cool.
And they're, they ate lunch here, and, so it's working. We're, we're having fun, I think.
Can I ask you a quick question, too? A lot of people have asked me, "Could you describe a slow ride?" Everybody says-
A slow ride is for people like you and me.
Okay.
Does that answer it?
On a what?
So, bring your Schwinn-
Oh, it's on a bike.
Or bring your 10-speed, or whatever, but we're not gonna go fast.
Okay.
So, there you go.
Started in Detroit. You ever go on the law?
Thank you.
I saw the one they were doing in Belle Isle.
Mr. Lepley.
Bob Lepley, 539 North William Street. Couple things prior to the reason for my being here. Primary is, one, I wanna thank, uh, good mayor and Commissioner Hendricks for attending a committee meeting based on a request that I submitted in my last presentation, and our worthy attorney, Bob Davis, and, uh, I think, uh, a lot of, uh, meeting across the table yields a lot of good, ultimately, a decision that will benefit everybody. I wanna call your attention to the magazine put out by the MML, which occasionally shows up in your pocket. Hope you have a chance to review it. Even in the advertising, I notice pictures like this one on the lead page, which was an ad for Plunkett &amp; Cooney, one of those legal firms that makes a lot of money, uh, here and there, right, Bob? Uh-huh. And, uh, at any rate, it says, "Thrive in communities don't happen by accident. Public officials across Michigan work to develop healthy business districts and safe neighborhoods that residents are proud to call home." Another article in here, "The Serious Business of Michigan Fund. For some now, we've been discussing the compelling need to invest in our infrastructure. We've done that in Marine City and hope to continue to do so," which will lead me into what I wanna say later. Other articles. Tourism Matters by Sarah Nichols, um, and they talk about how bringing traffic in and out of a city helps everyone at long range, at the very least reducing the tax base for the residents at some point, or at least augmenting it. Revenue is important. Um, and then, an article by Rod DeJardin, the mayor of Munising, way up there. Now, they have the pictured rocks to draw tourists. We have the river and freighters. So, you know, uh, one is natural, one is man-made, but certainly both are an attraction. The river certainly isn't man-made, that's for sure. And he speaks about the value of tourism to the economy in Munising. And, uh, he also says, "What a wonderful problem, a pretty good problem to have. Lack of facilities, shortage of water for guests that come through town, and, uh, shortage of parking." One of the problems that we're dealing with. And finally, rural communities tap into the power of the arts. Mr. Coes just talked about cultural events that are gonna be coming, as well as fundraising events for helping the kids in town out with their teen center, and certainly in favor of that kind of thing, which I'm sure you are as well. I give Mr. Commissioner Turner a lot of credit. He has persevered endlessly on behalf of the youth in this town. I can remember touring several buildings with him back in the day to find a suitable place for that kind of endeavor. You're to be commended, Mr. Turner, for hanging in there and persevering. Uh, my real purpose in being here is to respond to an article, you had a meeting May 4th where I, I last spoke on behalf of Tifa, and, um, on May 5th, there was an article, a summary of that meeting, uh, in the Times Herald, uh, May 5th issue. And I wanted to respond to that. The headline said, "Days numbered in Marine City Tifa districts." My response begins, "Wait, well, not so fast." Okay? Um, "The phrase smacks of the doom gloom and fear rhetoric so prevalent in today's politics. Tifa is done with its purposes." Not true. "It needs to be extended, not dissolved." In the commission meeting on May 4th, the mayor stated he feels legally obligated to follow the city attorney's advice. "We've almost got a mandate," he said, after very clearly stating during his run for mayor that he would do nothing to halt the obvious progress in the city. This is a campaign promise, in my opinion, being broken by this move. There are between 13 and 1500 Tifas and/or DDAs in Michigan, which are, uh, leniently overseen by the state as they are successful. Indeed, severe cuts in revenue sharing, the means by which the state funnels tax dollars back to the budgets, uh, of the cities, townships, and so forth, during the economic crash of 2007 and '08, uh, have created drastic shortfalls in operating budgets. I believe the cuts were made to balance the state budget, regretfully on the backs of local budgets. In many cases, Tifas and DDAs are indirectly relieving operating budgets and making it possible for communities to stay afloat during recovery. By the way, recovery is drastically delayed by the limits of the Headley Amendment. The city attorney fulfilled the obligation given him by the commission, but failed to cite the possibility that decades-old Tifas and DDAs have been extended to continue the investment and ultimate tax revenue growth they have historically fostered. Marine City's Tifa is no exception. It has been extended and can be again. A screeching halt to development and growth, not a wise fiscal move. Cities around the state are surviving, and in some cases thriving because of growth projects funded all or in part by local TIFs and DDAs. Marine City is a sparkling example of wise promotion and investment over the years. There will always be disagreements about the merit of specific projects along the way, but the loudest naysayers cannot deny Marine City's vigorous renaissance since 2009. The town has been mentioned three to four times in Crane's Business Detroit as a top five destination within an hour of the metro area. Recently, our town was acclaimed one of the 10 most interesting places to visit in the entire state. If you talk to folks in neighboring communities, they express awe and envy at the positive development since 2005. At, and in 2005, by the way, when at 6:00 PM in the winter, and at 8:00 PM in the summer, you could literally roll a bowling ball down Water Street and not risk hitting anybody. Uh, to 2017, where the biggest problem now is lack of parking. The current Tifa board continues to work on that situation. In my opinion, Tifas and DDAs already in place are viable, successful, and lightly regulated. They are the current key to survival and development. They need to be extended and not dissolved. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yeah. Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I need a motion to approve the city regular meeting minutes, May 18th, 2017. Mrs. Lepley.
I move that we accept the- And approve the commission minutes from May 18th, 2017.
Any questions? Deletions or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda. Uh, I need a motion to approve the Tifa million, Tifa minutes, April 18th, 2017, special event permit for Detroit Children's Choir, the special event permit for maritime 5K run, and, uh, business license for Dust Busters.
So, moved.
Roll call vote, or, uh, any questions or concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lepley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
David Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
David Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Next, we have an introduction of ordinance number 2017-1, supplement to code of ordinances. Need a motion to discuss it. Mr. Avery.
Motion that we accept, well, discuss and accept ordinance number 2017-01.
Elaine, could you explain this a little bit for us?
Sure, I can. Um, this is the, the supplement to code of ordinances. Uh, what we're doing here is, we in essence are approving all of our ordinances throughout time as one bundled package. So, this is the first reading, and then we'll have a second reading and adoption of that. What this does is it sets a new line in the sand, so to speak, for where we are with our ordinances. So, as you know, throughout the last couple of years, we've had quite a few ordinances that have come before commission for approval, and at that time, they really are standalone supplements to our complete set of ordinances, and this rolls all of those in together to one complete package of ordinances. One of the reasons why we're doing this now is with the proposal that we approved with Waitrim to work on ordinances, this makes it so that everybody is on the same page. We know exactly what our ordinances are, everything together, so that we can make sure we're all on the same page and making changes to the documentation and ordinances that are complete for Marine City.
So, the amendments that we've made over the years have not been formally approved?
They, they have been approved, but standalone.
What do you mean by standalone?
They haven't been, uh, integrated into the numbering system of the ordinance formally. So, if you look at this, this is, it's not a- Structural thing? Recodification, yes. It's a structural approval that before we go forward with looking at all the ordinances at a whole, we've, we've got them all now numbered, and they're all in structurally into the ordinance system. There's no request tonight to change any ordinance, or to alter the language of any ordinance. It's strictly a structural procedural thing. Now, when, when we're here discussing potential deletions, modifications, or additions to ordinances, we'll all be able to flip to the right page. Whereas before, some of them would still be loose and not numbered, and, uh, uh, not an uncommon problem, but- To quote it by number? We can, we can go right to the book. Mr. Avery.
I would like to withdraw my motion, since it's not appropriate at this time. We were just reading the information.
You want this approved, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to approve the introduction.
Yeah.
Well-
Your motion is approved.
Your motion's good.
Okay.
Withdraw, you're withdrawn.
I had vote to adopt in there. That's the part that is wrong.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So, I was right that I was wrong, that I was wrong.
It's introduction.
And again, the important thing here is, no ordinances are being altered, just structurally arranged correctly.
I think it's a good step in the right direction. Anytime we can help simplify and organize anything to make it more user-friendly, I think that's, uh, that's a responsible thing to do. It's probably something we should be doing on a regular, annual, biannual basis anyway, so I can't recall doing it since I've been around and following things in the almost 10 years I was even with planning commission, so it's a step in the right direction. Anything that gets us better organized before someone else has taken over a big project like that, uh, is helpful to the others that are involved in that project as well.
So, American Legal Publishing will take, and, we've been saying, place them in a proper order, and we never-
In essence, they already have done that. Uh, taking a look at all of our ordinances online, they've provided us with a book, but this is the stack, step that the commission has to have final authority for approving it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lepley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
David Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Next, we have an introduction of ordinance number 2017-02, water sewer rates.
I move to introduce ordinance number 2017-02 in regards to water and sewer rates.
Mr. Avery.
Second that motion. Um, can you tell us what, I know I asked you. I forewarned you.
So, what this is, is this is an amendment of the, uh, charges for water and sewer rates based upon our audit to keep the, uh, cost in line with the expenses. The only thing that has actually changed in this from the cost perspective is the commodity charge, which is that first-line item. Uh, it's going from, for water usage, 677 to 694. That's a 17-cent difference. And for the sewer usage, it's going from 537 to 550, which is a 13 cents difference. So, that's the only change that we have.
And it's straight-up fees, same.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Simpson.
I just wanna point out for those following along at home, this is something we talked about during our budget workshop, so it's not anything, um, new. You know, as a reminder that, uh, our, uh, water plant operates at about a 30 to 40% capacity. The break-even point on operating something like that is about 60% capacity, so we have to adjust these rates. You know, the, these are enterprise funds, so what we take in in water income needs to pay for the system, so we're current, we're sort of, you know, cursed with this, for better or for worse, so, um, it's nothing new. It's something that we'll always fight until we can, you know, get somebody in here that has a heavy water user, or, uh, provide water elsewhere, which are all things that we've been looking into, so.
Any other questions or concerns, Mrs. Lepley?
I was just gonna say that, uh, people tend to ignore this. They don't watch it on television or whatever. They don't pay any attention until that bill comes that's bigger than they expected. Uh, so, uh, the office people are gonna be getting those hits, too, so you might wanna prepare and maybe have a little sign, you know?
Anyone? Anyone else?
What would the signs say? If you don't like it here, go to Flint?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just couldn't help it.
Hearing none. Hearing none. We're going to move on. Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Carry.
All right. Resolution for Publicly Funded Healthcare Contribution Act. Elaine, can you explain this a little bit before we...
Sure. At the state level, there is a requirement for any community regarding health insurance benefits that they provide for their employees, that there is either a cap or they have to pass a resolution to, in essence, waive that cap. We have some contractual obligations through our union that unfortunately, we aren't able to meet that cap. So through this resolution, this is the proper mechanism for commission to allow us to continue to provide those contractual obligations for the insurance.
Need a motion to accept.
I move to approve resolution number 011-217 in regards to Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act as presented to us.
Support.
Any questions or concerns?
Does this have an effect on our current contracts? Are they aware that this is coming, people that work for the city?
You know, this is something that unfortunately, the state kind of tied our hands in regards to this, knowing that we have union contracts. If for some reason we did not pass this, we would need to renegotiate all of our union contracts and...
This doesn't change the contract. This allows for what the contract says. Absent the waiver, if you don't pass this, you have to start renegotiating the contract. This is not one of great choice here, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Move on to Maritime Days Fireworks. Need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the request for Maritime Days Festival in regards to their application for fireworks.
Support.
Motion support. Do we have any questions on it?
On the shelves.
Yeah.
I think it's just a good time to thank everyone from Maritime Days for working really hard. It seems the past several years, we're just in, you know, bigger and better, and it's a great asset to the community. Thanks to all those folks that are working on that festival.
Hope the wind's blowing in the right direction. Joe's around, and I'm not in charge for that. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next, we're moving on to waiving competitive bid for DPW pickup truck.
This is something that was presented to you in the budget, and the option that we're looking at is through my deal pricing, which in essence is a source where products have already been bid out, they've done the bidding process, and this is a low price that we can get through the my deal. We'd be looking for a motion to waive the competitive bidding and also to purchase the truck at this time.
I move that we waive the competitive bidding and move for the purchase of the Chevrolet pickup truck for the sum of $39,148.
Do we have to separate that out?
Yeah.
Competitive bidding has...
Different options.
We have to do the first one, the waive the competitive bid first.
Okay, waive the competitive bidding.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that it doesn't sound as grim as the word of waiving all these. What we're doing is riding on the coattails of the state, who has done competitive bidding from a much larger pool. So we're going to see several of these, and it's far from underhanded.
Do you have a motion without a...
I thought Mr. Avery seconded it, but I will second it.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
I just want to, you know, essentially second what Commissioner Avery was saying. It's very common for states to have these bidding processes. I know school districts do the same thing. It's economies of scale. You know, Marine City probably couldn't canvass the entire state, even if you had someone that was just dedicated to just competitive bidding. So these programs are really great, that's why we often use them. Not only does it save resources, they're pretty far-reaching, oftentimes even have vendors from out of state bidding because it's a good opportunity for them. It always yields better pricing for the municipality or the school district, or those individuals partaking in that.
Any other questions or concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
No. Moving on to waiving competitive bid for the JCB Backhoe.
Same scenario, different equipment.
Any... Can I get a motion?
Sure, I move to waive competitive bidding for the new JCB Backhoe loader in the sum of $97,900.
Support.
Any other questions or concerns on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Flossin?
I don't know what this term is.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Moving on to waive competitive bid for patrol vehicle.
Similar circumstances, another department, another vehicle.
Can I get a motion for this one? Mr. Avery.
Yes, I make a motion that we waive competitive bidding for the purchase of the new patrol vehicle.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on this one?
I just go.
So as this silliness continues, the people that are opposing this, what are you suggesting that we go out and get pricing from three or four different organizations for the same thing? When we know that BMI thing is the best price? So it sounds like you're just looking to satisfy a personal need to go to a few dealerships and see what the prices are. We could do that online at any point in time, that's fine. It just delays things a couple of weeks. So, Mr. Edrich, not to get disappointed, but it sounds like you're going to have to go online, get a couple of prices, and show everybody here that BMI pricing is the best. And perhaps as this continues, our police chief, you'll have to do the same thing. So, just comments.
Anything else?
For those keeping score at home, this is not a my deal. This is from a signature Ford out of Owasso, in the amount of $27,000 per vehicle. And again, these are all purchases that we discussed during our budget workshops. These aren't the first time we're seeing any of these. We discuss them at length during budget workshops, so...
Anyone else?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to now. I find it interesting that some people can vote to not, to waive competitive bidding when others do it, well, then it seems like it's wrong. Everybody has their vote, and everybody has their reasons. People need to just respect it.
Any other questions or concerns?
The motion was for one vehicle, a vehicle, is that what the motion was?
Two.
There's two vehicles listed.
Oh.
There's two vehicles listed, but I thought the motion was for...
This is for one.
For two, right?
I know it was two vehicles, I believe.
You could waive the competitive bidding process for the two vehicles, though at this point in time, only one would be purchased.
So are we waiving for both, or...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanavas?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Absolutely.
Okay, we need a motion to waive competitive bid for the equipment installation patrol vehicles, or would we just...
I think we can probably just skip this item because this really relied upon the purchase of another vehicle at this point in time.
Okay. Moving on to the sidewalk inspection program, sidewalk incentive program.
So before you, I have most of the final documents for the sidewalk inspection plan. We're obviously getting up to a tight deadline with timing, otherwise I would have kind of reenacted the sidewalk committee. To get this moving along, so that we can get things taken care of this year, provided you all with a copy of the letters that we'll be sending out to the homeowners, along with some changes that have been made in the sidewalk inspection program, primarily adding the information for the incentive program. And then also, initially, when we were developing this program, it was going to be done through the building department, we're actually going to be doing that through DPW. They're the authority that would be the one that would go out and be doing all the inspections. So it really didn't make sense to have the building department do the paperwork and then pass it off to DPW, when we can just have DPW take care of all of it in one location. I've also added in the information for the assistance with the demolition. There are some residents that have worked together to compile a team of people. I think some of the football players from the high school are part of the team that's going to help with some demolition to help offset costs for people as well. Yep. So at this point, I've got a schedule in there as well. I have worked with Mike pretty extensively on this, and we feel that the schedule is something that is attainable. He would be going out and doing the marking of the sidewalks and leaving the program flyers throughout the month of June. July 1st, we'll send the letters to everyone that has been marked to notify them of their repairs that are necessary, along with estimated pricing at that time. August and September would be an opportunity for people to either get back to us, let us know if they're going to do the sidewalk themselves, or if they want us to take care of the sidewalk, or if they want to schedule an opportunity to go to ZDA to appeal the decision. September 1st would be the time that we would send out the final notice letter, giving them an additional 15 days if we have not heard from them. From that, we will be able to put together bid documents, which eventually will have those available for your review and approval as well. We would send out the sealed, a request for sealed bid packages September 1st. At the September 21st meeting, commission would have that information before them to elect a contractor for that, and they would be able to do the work from September to October and possibly even into November, if it took that long. Not the perfect situation, we'd like to get it done before the leaves fall, but it is something that has been done before and certainly shouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Avery.
I need a motion that we begin adoption of this sidewalk plan. I was quite familiar with the plan, and I see it has been worked on by city people, and it looks very good. The letters and so on were nicely done, so...
Got motion support, any question?
There were some amendments, so just looking for the improvement. Those amendments, including the information about the incentive program and the assistance with demolition, and then the permitting from the building department to the DPW.
Yeah, that was obvious.
Any...
It's a great step, you know, the final step moving forward. I just want to thank Mr. Stapley, Mr. Hillfrank, and the others that, you know, jumped up to offer assistance for removal of the old concrete for the individuals that seemed to, you know, spiral pretty quickly in a very positive direction. So I just want to thank those individuals for jumping up and willing to help those that don't have the resources necessarily to help themselves. It's wonderful.
There are also quite a few other people, I think, that are going to help with some of that. And DPW, I think we're going to wind up parking a truck for them to be able to leave the concrete in on-site, so they won't have to haul it.
They're great, I know. I read online, they had appropriate tools lined up in the whole business. I mean, so it was, it's a good number of people. It's not just those two individuals, those are the only two that I knew off the top of my head. There's a whole crew of them, that's great.
I think those two are the ones that started the ball.
Yep, absolutely.
To get everything done. Now, are we going to make sure that if these are rental units, that we send them to the correct person and not leave it for the person that's renting?
I think we talked about that, and what we're going to be doing is leaving the flyers at the door, and if we know it's a rental, we're going to mail the flyers to the people as well. But whoever owns the property is the one that's going to get the official letter.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we're going to move on to park name request.
We have received a letter from Keith Jenkins on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Kadu. They, of course, are the ones that have generously donated the pavilion and restrooms at the park just to the south of the beach. He would like to request that city commission name the park their Mariner Park and be allowed to place a modest plaque at the site as well, recognizing his efforts on behalf of the donation to the city.
I move to approve the name request as requested with our thanks to the Kadu family and everyone that's worked on this project.
Support.
Support with thanks.
Any questions?
Well, not a question, just a comment. I think it's very nice that he's trying to remain almost anonymous with this fine gift. I hope we can find some way to have a small plaque or some way to honor what was done for the benefit of the city, rather than have the whole name on the top, but still, this was quite a nice thing and very generous, and I'd like to show the city gratitude.
Anyone else? I'd like to say, I really like the name. I think it's very ethical for the area. Thank you very much for your gift. Is this one a roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, for the huge thank you.
Mayor Vanavas?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right. Next, we're up to the hope-not-handcuffs discussion.
I just want to bring everybody up to date. We had the meeting, and we had the whole discussion on this. The next phase is, then I went to our chief, I sat down with the chief, he did attend the meeting, and I assured him that, you know, this wasn't going to be a big drain on his department. So after we've talked about it, he's fully supporting the program.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And so now, the issue is, we have to work with, I have a call in to Howard Colby, who's the Blue Water Families Against Addiction president. He is now currently trying to set up the meeting with all the players, so that we can come up with a process. Once we get that process all set up, that we can utilize here, then we'll have another big meeting here to try to get the volunteers. So we have a way to go, but we're making progress, and since we're kind of like... So we have a way to go, but we're making progress, and since we're kind of like the starting point for St. Clair County, all the little details have to be worked out, but they assure me that they're going to work with us, we'll get it figured out. We know that our department isn't a 24/7 department, so we'll probably have hours. So all those little details will be worked out, and then when we get to that point, I'll bring back even more information. So I'm just trying to keep you up to date on all the steps that we're going to have to take, but we're going to keep working on it and try to help the people in the community.
Anybody have any questions on?
Is there anything that's needed right now other than the parties that are already talking?
No, they have to, the issue is, we have to get like the health department and all of them together, and so we have to figure out how it's all going to work.
So at this point, those interested in being the angels in the community or anything like that, is there anything that we need for those individuals that have expressed interest in that or anything?
No, they just have to keep, I'll keep them posted, I have everybody's emails and names from the meeting. We'll post another big session when we get to that point where we can finally get the angels, and then we'll have their training and their process on how this is going to work, but we have to get the whole process started.
Just want to make sure, there's a couple people that have asked.
No, I'll keep them all informed, and we'll keep everybody going.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Moving on to financial business, I need a motion to approve dispersments including payroll for $176,272.99.
So moved.
Any questions or concerns on financials? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Moving on to city manager's report.
First of all, I would like to introduce you all to my summer intern that I have here that's going to be helping me out in the office and learning a little bit about city government over the summer. Her name is Brianna Rose. I've had her in the office with me for a week. Next week, she's going to go around with Mike and see a little bit about what he does, and she'll also be visiting other departments and learning a little bit about city government. She's here for the summer, and then she will be going to Paris for overseas studies, so that should be very interesting. Hopefully she'll stay in contact with us. I think she has a little higher aspirations than city government, kind of trying to find out a little bit about the grassroots of government at this point. Interestingly enough, she took a look at our charter and recognized a name. Her great-grandfather was one of the people that was on the commission at the time charter was signed, so very interesting connection there. We have a potential issue with the new LED lights that are at City Hall. Something about the lights pointing, and you can see them kind of when you're coming down the road or something, so we'll work on trying to figure out what we can do, if maybe we need some shielding or something there, and working on getting a little more information about.
That was taken care of.
Um, maybe not at this point, but we're still working on that, so just wanted to let people know about that. I completed my meetings, my individual meetings with each of my department heads regarding their goals and strengths, weaknesses, so I'll be working with them periodically throughout the year on that. Met with the grant writer, myself and the chief of police, we both met with her regarding COX grants that have just been announced. There are a couple interesting things that we may want to pursue, she's going to be getting a little bit more information for us. One is that we could potentially leverage the seasonal position that we have in this budget to help pay for a full-time position. Looks like the program at this point, in essence, is kind of a four-year progressive program where you pay more and more share, and then the last year you pay for the full-time officer 100%. Just preliminarily looking at the numbers, if we decided to have the seasonal position for the next four years, we would, in essence, get a full-time person for the cost of what we would for a seasonal person for four years. So that's something that we're exploring and getting more information, looking at the numbers, I may have something for everyone in the future. Another option is that there's some funding for community policing, and it's something that could potentially utilize to help with the Hope Not Handcuffs program, to potentially fund someone in the office, or at least offset some of our costs to help with the program. I met with the DPW union, still working on the contract negotiations, we've been back and forth a couple times, I've got them back next week working on that. I think we're getting pretty close to something that will be before the board, not too long. They have started patching the streets from the sewer and water, I know there's been a lot on Facebook about some of the areas where we still have the dirt and the open patches and everything. Like I've mentioned in prior meetings, it's because you can't really do the asphalt in the winter, and we were waiting for the plants to open. The plants did open, but we've been tied up on a lot of the water main breaks and taking care of that, but hopefully we should be able to make some progress and get to those over the next coming days and weeks. The playground equipment has been delivered. We are tentatively looking at June 17th for a community build date for the playground equipment. That's subject to weather and site preparation. Just to remind you, when we originally talked about this, Mike was fortunately going to donate his time, though he was going to use DPW equipment to prepare the site. So if you see him there on a Saturday, that's what he's doing, is preparing the site for the playground equipment. We also did receive the ADA mat that has been delivered. Hopefully, weather permitting and instructions understood fully, we can get that installed next week or so, but hang tight for that one. I was down at the beach today in the slope, we, I think, still are going to need to find a way to deal with that slope. So we'll work on that and take a look at the directions. The pavilion, I understand that the countertops are going to be installed in the bathroom next week. We've got the beautiful picnic tables in there already, we've got some of the benches out already. The capacity is going to be 100. We've had Joe Slangster take a look at that and figure the capacity, so it's nearing completion, and we're pretty excited about that. I'm hoping at some point in the future, we can have a nice ribbon-cutting ceremony there with Shafik and his wife and everyone else there, hopefully from the board can attend. I have some incident management software training tomorrow with the county, so I'll be up there a good chunk of the day tomorrow. We have developed a newsletter that we will be sending out with the next tax bills. This is something that I've been wanting to institute since I've been here, so we finally kind of have put everything together. There's going to be a little bit of information from each department. It's informative, and it's something that hopefully we'll be able to do either every tax bill or at least on an annual basis. Bid documents for the Mary Street project, Tetra Tech has prepared those, I've not had a chance to take a look at them, so hopefully we'll be taking care of that soon. Wade Trim is going to be having some field days coming up for the parking study. So Saturday, June 10th, is going to be their weekend day that they plan to be out. As a backup day, they have the following Saturday, and then for their weekday, they plan to be here Thursday, June 15th, and their backup day would be the next day. And that's all I've got.
Can you tell us where we're at with Safe Houses Schools and the engineering back from Tetra Tech? Have we received all of that? Where are we, kind of in that process with them?
I'm sorry, for?
For the Safe Houses Schools and the engineering?
Oh, Safe Houses Schools. The engineering was completed and submitted to the state, so now it's in the, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then potentially, we could be in the next round of projects with them, potentially?
Yes, yes. The project would not be slated to have construction until next year, though. We go out to bidding late this year, and in essence, it would be in limbo over winter, and then the construction would occur after school next year.
So wait in on the state then?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Got one question, have you heard anything back from the captain of the Red Witch, so we can put a proposal together for the commission?
I have not, I understand that the attorney has had an opportunity to kind of take a look at some of the potential issues with the tall ship docking on our seawall. Perfect person, since he has a Coast Guard connection.
Yeah, I got it, I researched it, you know, I kind of just took that project on my own, meaning I'm not charging for that, it's just a fun project. And then I heard he might want to switch what boat comes here, I just kind of learned that today. The boat that he suggested, the would be a, it would just be a great amenity here, because I think it fits with the character that you're trying to create along the waterfront. Just a sailboat that is there, you know, to take charter money, I don't think is what you're looking for. But I checked the license requirements, I looked at his licensing history, it's all in place. I talked to the director of the Coast Guard in Cleveland, and the boat's been permitted over the years, it's inspected. I was able to take a look at the historical inspection reports, the licensing, the everything down to the checking of the life preservers and whatnot. So, yeah, it'd be a great opportunity, we'd have to work on, I think, getting it along the shoreline is not the issue, but how we would safely manage people onto the vessel for charter events, which I think is the goal of the individual.
Yes.
You know, you can talk about it in lots of different ways, but I think at the end of the day, it is sort of a business, but it would also bring business. So we'd have to work on that entranceway gangplank sort of concept, and look at his insurance policies with respect to the, not only with respect to the people as passengers, but with getting on and off the vessel.
Zip line.
Zip line, yeah.
Pirates of the Car- Or walk the plank at your-
Pirates of the Caribbean, right. And I don't know what you would do for parking, I mean, I'm just not that well-versed on that issue, but I'm sure that can be managed. But it's a, it's a nice vessel, it really is a vessel of character.
It looks very circa the area.
It would supplement your community, I think, very well.
And I did touch base with Erica, the line with the chamber, and she's willing to work with us on joint marketing for, to help him with, and talked to a couple of the restaurateurs, and they're very interested in doing packages with him, so.
Have you met the captain?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We met Elaine and I, met.
Yeah, we met him a couple weeks ago.
No eye patches or anything?
No, no, no.
No, he actually, he has a place up in Fort Grashit, I think.
Fort Grashit, yeah.
Back legs, tattoos.
No, no. Not a typical pirate.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering, because we're going to need to put something together to bring to the board as soon as possible, because he wanted to be in the area around the beginning of July, so I didn't know if there's anything we need to do legally, because he did claim that he was willing to sell, to sign off on a whole harmless policy, so I don't know if there was anything we need to look into insurance-wise.
Well, one of the things that we would do is regulate him as a business, because he is a business, so he'd be required to get a business license. We've got water that he can tap into at the source, and he's willing to pay any cost that we would have, we'd obviously have to find some way to estimate that and agree upon the costs. As far as any type of pumpouts or anything, when they do the port-a-johns down, down the road from where he would potentially dock, he can have a pumpout done by them as well, and that would just be a charge that would be passed on to him. Really, I think the most significant thing is that this is someone that wants to use our seawall, and that really is an asset, and that is probably the most important thing from a perspective for commission to approve.
Mr. Avery.
It sounds like the long pole in the tent. Something that would have to be done immediately is to come up with the gangplank device. It would be on city-
Because this is not his first round at this. I just don't know historically, Mr. Avery, how he docked, did he have a slip, or did he, you know, what was he using? But he may have that very well, may already have that approved. It could be a no, could be real simple.
Then all we'd have to do would be to approve, putting that on city property to use.
Correct.
And a business license.
And then his individual relationship with customers would be through charter agreements, either groups or individuals, and they all, that's a contractual relationship between him and the individuals, and the payment, whether it's a group or just, you know, individuals. So that would be his relationship, and his hold harmless with them would be none of our business per se.
When we were discussing with him, we did emphasize the fact that with our, you know, teen center and that going in, that we would like him to provide some form of, you know, free education for some of our youth, you know, as a, some form of camp, and he was all for that, and I don't know if he was just trying to drum up new sailors, because he will need to have a new crew when he comes to this side of the state, because he's over in Kenosha at this time, but he also mentioned that he was willing to help organize a tall ship festival for us, because he is a member of the tall ship association, so. I think it's a, just something we need to move on fairly.
So we're going to have to have something by the next meeting, because we'd probably have a meeting in July, the first part of July.
Yeah, let me know what you hear, and I'll be happy to spend some more time on it.
I'll contact him.
And I don't think this charter is going to have alcohol, so that would be raised another issue, but I don't think he's planning on that.
I, that's one question I didn't ask.
We talked a little bit about that, and he was not very favorable doing like booze cruises or anything like that.
Just having been in the Coast Guard, I know sometimes alcohol is associated with boating.
But he did, he did mention that he doesn't do-
Came to my attention in the future.
-food cruises or, they do serve food on it, but it was, he tries to keep it more in a famine-oriented program.
Okay.
Mr. Avery.
Would the city have to make any changes to the seawall for bumpers or proper docking facilities?
We may need a, I don't know, you may need some sort of new cleat or?
We'd have to put bow and stern, anchoring point form, and he would provide springs. Keep it up.
And there's someone that we know that has talked about, that he has something he might be willing to let the city utilize.
We have proper engineering about how that would affect the seawall and its ability to secure a certain size and or weight in weather as well?
If we had something like that, it actually would not be on the seawall, it'd be attached in the ground.
However, we are connecting to city property, I guess I should say.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things, Algenack has had a number of issues with boats docking along their seawall, but with this being a sailboat, it's a little bit different because it doesn't have the side jets that in essence are washing away the material next to the seawall.
But since it's something that we haven't had, and it's, you know, could potentially be a big issue if done wrong, so I want to make sure, you know, especially when I'm hearing words like, wants to have it very quickly, and this is now the second meeting where this has been brought up, and, you know, doesn't sound like communication has been very frequent, I think is a great, it sounds like a great opportunity, but just want to make sure that important things like engineering and looking out for our own best interests don't fall through the cracks there.
Good point.
Anything else for the city manager? Commissioner Privilege. Mr. Avery, want to start us off?
I will start us off, unfortunately, it's going to be a little negative, so sorry to lead off that way. A little embarrassing for the city probably, not the city government. On Sunday, Memorial Day weekend, I found a message chalked on the sidewalk by my house. I will read it with just a little editing for TV use. Said, Amber was here, FU America. What is our schools teaching about American history and civics? What would cause somebody who is fortunate enough to live in Marine City to demonstrate her ignorance by writing that message on the sidewalk? Have our parents and schools failed to educate the children of how valuable and rare our freedom really is, and that the American people use that weekend? freedom really is and that the American people used that weekend to honor the military dead who protected this freedom? Let us remember that the U.S. Constitution proclaims that we all have an equal chance to achieve life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. However, it does not guarantee us an equal outcome. With that said, I would like to thank Jesse White and the past VFW members for providing the parade and Memorial Day ceremony that we Marine City residents could gather to publicly, publicly honor our nation's fallen warriors. Maybe we could make a little more effort even to help make that better by coming up with some brief words from other people along the subject of why we had gathered, but anyway, I thank the people that put on what we had. It was very nice. Thank you.
I also would like to thank Jesse White and all those who participated in that. It was a tradition in my family to go to that every year, to those gatherings around our fallen warriors, so I'd like to do that. I'd also like to apologize to our department heads for the apparent lack of trust in your expertise and procedural abilities and for increasing your workload. I'm sorry about that. Also, this is the season of graduations and weddings and gardens, and also our farmers are fighting very wet ground this year and everything is getting in late, and I know our mayor has spent a lot of time planting and replanting so that we might harvest in the fall. Also, this is the season when concerts begin, the first one, the Concert in the Park, June 19th, a Monday at 7:00. I also found somebody that told me a silver lining about our bad streets. They said, "Hey, we got free speed bumps. You cannot run down our streets for that damage in your car." Also, today I had a, an incident. I stopped to pick up some donuts for our police officers and as I was pulling into the bakery, a very large bus called Great Lakes Charters and Tours blocked me in and unloaded 50 to 100 people, and they all went in there and bought all the donuts. What can I do? Bought the popcorn, bought the donuts, bought the candy. We were, what could we do with that?
Who's responsible for that? We've got to look into it.
I don't know. Who's going to look into that, but it was, it was very interesting. Also, who's your superhero persona, supporting the International Comic Con? And also, thanks to Dan Micoff, who kind of kicked this off and is recovering from surgery, and I hope that we can all pitch in and do well with that. Looking forward to it. Also, Lucy, Lacy Lou's Fashion Boutique is opening this Saturday also at 312 South Water Street, a new business in our town. And the dedication service on Sunday, this June 4th, for St. John's United Church of Christ in their new home at 527 North William. They are my next-door neighbor and good neighbors. Thank you.
I would just like to thank the Rotary Club. They've been working for a while on trying to do the rope down at the Nautical Park, and that's been done. It, weekend before last, a group of them got down there for about three and a half hours, re-roped everything, took, took all the old stuff down. Mike found some rope. We've been looking to buy it and we got some donated, so we went to it and cleaned up that and it was all through the weekend when the guys were working on it, the people were thanking them and it looked good. So, if anybody hasn't seen it yet, that everything's all roped down there at the park and going there in Memorial Day. Want to thank all the veterans for putting their time in and all the ones that passed away. Thank you.
Just want to add my pile on. My thanks to Jesse White and all those that partook in both the parade and/or their ceremony. You know, our police department, fire department, DPW, you know, they're pretty much 100% in attendance on that day and it's, these are the type of events that, that's what, you know, small towns are about, so we, you know, we should cherish those and really appreciate all the effort and all the extras that people do to make those happen. So, thank you to everyone that participated in that, well, Mother Nature especially cooperated this year. I was asked to remind individuals that the American Cancer Society Relay for Life is coming up. They've moved locations. I believe this year they're up in the park in, in St. Clair, but that's an important organization. There's a group in town led by Mark Rowell that's still raising funding for his team, but you go out and support those individuals there, they're, they're all day. I believe it starts at 9:00 or 10:00, but it's sort of an open house. You can stop by any day, just show your appreciation for the, for their work, honor anyone that you know that may be affected in your life with cancer. I'm a nine-year cancer survivor myself. I've participated in many years. It's, if you've never been, it's a, it's a wonderful event to attend to. There's a lot of groups like National Honor Society and other school groups that participate and I want to make sure that people know that that's happening and be sure to make a point to, if you so choose, support them financially or at least go out and support them and their hard work at the site as well. And it's graduation season. This Sunday, the East China School District's schools graduate, so want to congratulate the students from St. Clair High School, Riverview East High School, Marine City High School, and also Cardinal Mooney High School as well. It's a wonderful time of year to celebrate the hard work of, of students, meeting certain milestones and it's often a time of change for families, you know, students going away to school or sort of starting the next chapter of life, so just want to congratulate all those students and those families for achieving that milestone.
I like your idea of the newsletter. I think that's great. Take advantage of the free mailing, right? Since we have to do it anyway. What kind of things are you planning to put into that? Just general communication kind?
General communication from each department, so just a little bit about kind of what's going on, maybe what's changed, what's new. We'll try and get that out to city commission before we get it out, so that you guys are prepared and know what's coming out.
Good thinking. I'd like to also echo what Commissioner Lovely talked about, the Comic Con. It's only their second year, but the first year was huge. I mean, for the small amount of advertising they did, second year is actually International Comic Con now, because we have Canada involved and when I first heard about it, I was like, "Comic Con? Yeah, right, that sounds like something the daughter will be at and whatever." It's for all ages. It's pretty awesome. Actually, most of the people that were there in costume were not teenagers, you know. And my lovely wife, Kim, is going to be out in front of the Blue Pike painting faces, so kids of all ages, come by there, get your face painted. It's going to be an awesome event. I highly recommend you stop in and check it out. That's it.
Mr. Man? Can I just, commenting on Mr. Avery's Memorial Day, I had an opportunity on Memorial Day to speak, and I try to go somewhere every year and speak, and one of the things that we can remember is in December 28th of the year 2000, then-President Bill Clinton passed a law called the National Moment of Remembrance Act, little-known law, but it's on the federal books. And what President Clinton studied was that at 3:00 local time on Memorial Day is when you're at the height of freedom. It's not in the morning, it's not at night, it's at 3:00 and that's when most of us are doing our choice at the end of a three-day weekend, and so we, we use that as a basis of a speech this year. The problem we're having, Mr. Avery, is in, during World War II, about 15% of all Americans were associated with the military, and now we're down to less than one-half of 1%. And the kids are, are not getting educated on the difference between Veterans Day, veteran being somebody who came home, and Memorial Day being somebody who didn't come home. And that distinction is getting blurred. We view Memorial Day as the beginning of summer and Labor Day as the end of summer. And the Remembrance Act, I'm not sure what else Bill did, but that, that was a great law, designating 3:00 on Monday. All baseball games stop at 3:00. If you're watching a baseball game, it stops, local. All Amtrak trains blow their horns at 3:00. NASCAR stops at 3:00. There's all kinds of things that happen at 3:00. Just something to remember for next year.
Good point.
I'd also like to thank Jesse White, because he asked me to speak and he asked me to make it short, and I concurred, because we've all seen how well I publicly speak, so it was an honor. And I've been to quite a few of the parades, about 20 or so in a row now. Missed a couple due to work, but it's, it's very moving if you listen to the actual what's being done and they, Jesse did a last call for service for, I believe, three, three or four, that they'd just recovered their remains and it was very moving and I was glad I was after that, because I'd have lost it. It was very, very nice and we had great weather, so it wasn't too hot, wasn't too cold, wasn't raining. Yes, and Comic Con, my wife's been working hard along with Mrs. Turner, because Mr. Mike Coff has, had to have some surgery, so if we all can wish him some speedy recovery, you know. He, I seen him at the farm today and he scared me, walked by, huh? And I think he enjoyed that. I go, I'm just glad I wasn't the one with the heart condition, so. But yeah, it's going to be interesting. I've learned more about comics, Harry Potter, because it's the, all the discussion in our home every night, so I will be glad to see it come and I'm going to be glad to talk about something else at the dinner table, so I hope everybody can come on out and enjoy it. Sounds like it's going to have great weather and I think there's something spread out all the way through just about every area of Water Street from start to finish, so. Well, let's, I need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session to review legal opinions regarding zoning and code enforcement.
Roll call vote, please.
Senator Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Sensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Clowden?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bage?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Clowden?
Yes.